Greetings, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 10th Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners, FAA Joint Meeting. Sorry for the few-minute delay. We had a little technology issue that Amanda Abely took care of. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance, but we are being recorded tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to call your board into session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's 5:30.
6:30.
Oh, 6:00.
That's why you were late.
Anyone tall enough to fix the clock?
We're here for the numbers.
I'm on a step ladder, so we can't.
6:37, I'll call the FAA meeting to order.
At this time, I'd like to take a moment to welcome the new member of the FAA, Joshua Bucier. If you'd like to say a few words, go ahead, but welcome to the board, sir.
I'm just happy to be here and I'm happy to learn about our wonderful community.
A little bit about yourself. You are native Dudley, or did you move to?
I lived in Dudley my entire life. After briefly leaving for about a year, I came back here and now that I'm a little bit older, I can start to understand better, you know, where we are and how I can help.
Excellent. You have experience in this kind of stuff. You're just interested, what was your, did you go to college or what was your major?
I'm going back to college soon. I kind of went in for IT, wasn't really my thing, and I've gotten really into like sociology and kind of understanding things, so I'm hoping to go back for that, maybe law.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome.
Glad to be here, thank you.
Again, you still have a couple openings on the FAA, correct?
Two. Well, actually, no, actually four. We've got up to nine, I think we can have, right?
So there you go, folks. We have four openings. We filled a couple seats in the last little bit of time, so if people want to step up, now's the time. It's budget time, it's fun times. First up, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there is no approval of minutes tonight.
Thank you. Pass over to the next speaker. Citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to be heard tonight on an issue that does not require a vote of the board? Seeing and hearing none. Public business, Municipal Aggregate Energy Public Information Session by Colonial Power Group. Come on up, folks. You might have to either come up here and sit if you'd like, or you can both stand at the podium, whatever you'd like to do. Yep, just kind of pull that, when you sit there, just pull that mic towards you and hit the other mic.
Yep.
Guys can introduce yourselves, I know you've been there several times, but.
Good evening. Mark Capadona, Colonial Power, Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlborough, Mass.
Denise Allard, also from Colonial Power.
Greetings. So, tonight we're here to discuss the aggregation, kind of, I'm going to call it an information session, about a couple of mailings that went out. I'm going to start, I'm just going to show both. This is the opt-out mailing, and this is if you're on third-party supply or National Grid's green-up. But I'm going to start with this opt-out notice. So, everyone that received this opt-out notice, there's about, I don't know, 54, 100 residents that would have received this notice. This notice is about your electricity bill with National Grid and what the town has actually done. The way I want to frame this is, tonight is all about choice, and you're going to hear me continually talk about those choices. So, it's an opt-out aggregation, so if you do nothing, you're going to be enrolled in this program. I just want you to know, nothing to worry about out of the gate. The town's rate is going to be 12-8-2-6 compared to 14-6-7-2, so there'll be savings right off the bat. Right until August, we don't know what that rate will be. We expect that rate to go from 14-6 up because it's their winter rate, this is their summer rate. What I wanted to tell you is, right in this mailing, if anyone for any reason does not wish to participate, there's a self-addressed stamped envelope. Here, you sign your name, put it back in here, you're out of the program. More about choice. That doesn't mean you have to stay out of the program. If three months later, you wish to join the program again, log on to colonialpowergroup.com, choose Dudley, you can opt right back in. You can call us at 866-485-5858, extension one, and you can get right back in the program. There's no fees or penalties to leave this program, and there's no fees or penalties to leave basic service, so you can use those as you will. It's truly a choice that did not exist in the marketplace prior. So, I want to go through, from your standpoint, the resident, what it actually means to them. So, if you're getting any benefits from the utility, you're going to continue to get all your benefits. If you're on, if you use MassSave, you have a budget bill, automatic withdrawal, maybe you have a low-income discount, you have solar panels and you have those credits. All of those programs are utility programs, they work seamlessly with this program. You don't need to change anything, it'll all work seamlessly. You don't, you don't need to call, you don't need to do anything. All those programs work identically today as they do prior. So, from your perspective, the power goes out, you have a problem with your bill, any of those things, still a call the National Grid. National Grid no longer generates electricity. They're only a poles and wires company, that's what they do, is they keep the grid up and running to the best of their ability. So, this program is about the electron running through the wire. So, the choices, and again, more choices. The town has gone through excruciating detail to try to bring you choices that would work for the town. So, everyone that's in the program would get put into the most economical, that's the 12-8-2-6. You don't need to do anything, you're automatically going to be enrolled in that product. But more about choice. There are two other choices, if people want to support local renewables or another renewable product. The next product is an optional green product, it's at 12-9-9-2. That's a national wind product, gets you to 100% renewable. It, literally, it's cost you about maybe an extra 60 cents a month, and maybe $7.20 a year. If you wished to support local renewables, also very economical, they have a 5% more mass Class 1 product, and that's at 13-0-3-1. All you need to do, if you wish to support those renewable products, the town wanted you to have the options, is just to go on colonialpowergroup.com again, choose Dudley, and you can opt into the program. No harm, no foul. You can opt out there, you can opt in there. Simply call Colonial as well, you can get into the program, or choose any of the optional products. I want you to know how I view this, this program, because we've unfortunately all been through this the last three years, so no one in Dudley needs to pay more than the 12-8-2-6. The town has gone out and set a hedge for you. No one needs to pay more than that 12-8. If you wish to, that's completely yours, you know, up to you, but if the rates right now, it's below. Let's just say bombs start falling through Europe, and the rates go to 33 cents again, opt in the program. Let's just say, six months from now, peace comes across the planet. I wouldn't cross my fingers on that, but I'm saying to you, if it did, and basic service went to a 10 cents, opt out of the program, go back to basic service. You can do so freely, but you never, for the next 18 months, you never have to worry about this price, it's a fixed-price contract. So, the town's going to be there protecting you on the upside. 12-8 is all you have to pay for the next 18 months, and I just want one more thing on this, the opt-out. So, on your bill, still a single bill, National Grid's going to bill you, and rather than it saying Generation Services, Basic Service, it's going to state that you're part of the Dudley Ag first point. The one thing I want to mention is, there could be many contracts over the years, as long as you see Dudley Ag, you know that you're in the aggregation program, not with a third-party supplier. Which leads me to the next class. This, if you receive this postcard, this postcard here, that means that you're with a third-party supplier, or you have the green-up. You're a little bit different. We can't switch you because you've already made a choice in the marketplace, and if we did, we'd be slamming you. But that doesn't mean you can't join the program. The town's notifying you, you're on third-party supply, and you have many choices now. What this means is, go to your National Grid bill, turn it over, and look and find out who your supplier is. If your supplier has a rate on there and it's above the 12-8, when you call them to find out if there's a fear penalty to leave the program, ask them, will you meet or beat this rate? If they're willing to meet or beat this rate, stay with the third-party supplier, it's the marketplace. Use your leverage if you have it. If they're not, you don't have to argue with them. Find out if there's a fear penalty to leave, then there might be a little bit of arithmetic to do, but at the end of the day, you can join the program, and the way it actually works is, if you join this program, we're sending an enroll transaction to National Grid, National Grid will then send a drop transaction to whoever your current supplier is. You don't need to argue or getting, you know, a back-and-forth with your third-party supplier. Whenever you're switching, all you need to do is go to wherever you decided and enroll, and who's ever serving you will automatically get a drop transaction. So, this is different, I just want to make sure. You have all the same choices and a few extras, but you're not going to be automatically enrolled in the program. But you should look and find out what that third-party supplier is actually charging And I mentioned that first point is the supplier on the, on the bill, and it looks like, right out of the gate, just so that people have round numbers for yourself, it's around $10 or $11 a month per customer. If you're using around 600 kilowatts. If you use less, a little less savings, if you use more, maybe a few more. That is the program 101. I'm here to answer any questions anyone might have about any, anything aggregation-related.
So, anybody from the board have any questions? Anything the administrator wants to add?
No, but I will definitely agree, because I have a third-party supplier at home, and we were able to call and they met the price, and we're still out of the contract in November, and then we can make the switch. So, that's a real story, and I've heard a couple of other instances where they've done the same thing. It's a non-issue with a lot of them, they'd rather just, rather than have you go out of the contract, they'd rather just keep you in, match the rate, and let it expire.
Which is a great thing. You use the marketplace to your advantage.
Right.
Not easy to negotiate with third-party suppliers, but you did it.
Right.
Good for you.
Actually, it was easy in this.
No, I'm just saying, do believe, yeah, no, and then you've got to make a decision, but.
Right.
I've heard many people can, especially this contract, only until November, no winter months, a doable thing.
Right.
And I'm going to agree with Mr. Ruda, that's what I had done. I called my third-party, told them what your rate was, they beat it by a couple of thousandths of a penny.
Fine.
But I'm up in November, which was good, so that'll give me a chance to.
Absolutely.
It was a simple phone call.
All I'm saying is, use this, these are the choices the town program is bringing everyone, and they get to drive down electricity costs, as well as capital electricity costs on the upside, only because we've all been through this, you know, 33 cents, 18 cents, 16 cents, no one has to pay more. It's up to you, you certainly can, but you don't have to. The thing I really liked about this, this postcard, we haven't been able to do it up until now, those customers that were on third-party supply weren't even notified before, this was a win by the Department of Public Utilities, just to get everyone to look, because lots of people don't even realize, they may have signed this contract three, four, five years ago, and their rates could have gone from 12 cents originally to 18 or 20, we just saw one at 26 cents the other day, so.
And another thing too, before I go to the public, you held up a lot of props tonight, and the one that goes back in the, in the envelope, has to go back in the envelope. We had instances here, and the assistant administrator can, we were getting the form, they were dropping, some went through the mail, and they came back because it had the town of Dudley's logo, and some were dropped downstairs, so you have to put it in the envelope.
And drop it in the bill box.
That they gave you for free.
Exactly. It could not be easier. The town is not trying to force you into this, they're trying to bring you choices that did not exist in the marketplace. Your choice.
People, again, well, people are calling it a mandate, we're not, we're not mandating, those folk, Colonial Power's not mandating it, it's a choice. The only thing, as he said, you have to do is, if you want to get opt-out, you just have to call the opt-out. Otherwise, you're going to get opted out, and then if there's a penalty, you might end up having to pay it, right, if you get opted?
If, there might be, not in this program, but if you're on third-party supply.
Yeah, if you're on the big, big postcard.
Exactly. You may get up for your penalty, and the one, I just wanted to explain, I appreciate the lead, the reason this program is opt-out is to get the best price possible. If I came to the town and said, hey, we want to have an opt-in program, how many people are going to join? You're going to ask me, well, what's the price? How long's the term? And I'm going to say, I'm not certain. I'll go to the supply community, and I ask the supply community, okay, so they want to know how many people are going to opt in, for what term? Well, now we have the chicken and the egg, right? So, if we give them the terms, and we give them the load like we have for the opt-out, this is how we get the most effective pricing for the town. Unfortunately, it comes with an opt-out, but that just means, if you didn't do it, you save a little bit of money for a while. Whenever you opt out, it's completely up to you. Opt out and opt back in at any time without fear penalty. Town's protected you. Sorry, Joe.
That's good. At this point, we're going to ask anybody in the public, like the speaker, ask questions, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a third-party supplier too. So, I got that big postcard.
Yes.
If I, I, I'm thinking I'm like 13, 27, so if I decide to change, and I call my third party, do I have to do something to reach, to get this choice power?
So, yet, you don't, you need to find out if there's any fear penalty to leave your program?
There is.
And if there is not, all you need to do, you don't have to argue with them about dropping, just go to colonialpowergroup.com backslash Dudley.
Yep.
And there's an opt-in-out, opt-out button right on the, right on the screen, but right when you go in, have your electricity bill, click on that button, within five minutes you'll be enrolled in the program.
Perfect, thank you.
On your next meter read, just so you know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is not only Dory, I live in Dudley, and Farquhar Road. My question to you will be, I know you do the projects, and you do the studies, and you say this program is for 18 months. Correct. Now, 19 months, can you do, did you, did you did a study, how much will go up? Nothing, nothing, I mean, draw and drugs, I mean?
So, I love the question. I should have addressed it, thank you for the question, sir. So, his question is, what happens after 18 months, and where will rates be? Where rates will be, I cannot, I cannot answer.
I know that.
But at some point, I'll be, I'll be approaching the town with, hey, we see, I'm going to make it up right now, I'm going to make it sound good, but, I'm going to say, hey, we see a hole in the marketplace in 2027, the second half of it, and rates are at 10 cents for 36 months. Show the town, show all of the suppliers, all the terms, and let them make the decision again. Hey, we like what we see or we don't. But, when the rate's going to change, before it changes, you're going to receive a postcard like this, everyone that's in the program, stating, making this up again, this is Constellation for 36 months at 10 cents. You get to make that same decision again, whether you wish to stay in it or not, but you'll be notified.
Okay. The second question I have is, this program, are you going to be doing 18 months, every 18 months, every 12 months, so it's going to be three months and six months like all the parties?
No, so, for the most part, we try to do it longer because the stability is there, it's a protection, it's a hedge protection, but it really depends on the market. The reason we're at 18 months here is because prices are still a little bit elevated, so that's why we did the 18-month term. If things start to come down and we find a, you know, a sweet spot in the market, it could go as far as 36 or 40 months.
That's, that's when you go down, when you go up.
Yeah, if the price were to go up, we would probably go shorter. We would probably do something 12, 12 months, you know, it really depends, we did a lot of six-month contracts when rates went all the way up to, say, 30 cents, and people were in the middle of it, we did some six- or eight-month contracts at 22 cents. Thank you. You're welcome.
And we also did, you guys did a presentation, and again, you're going by trends, you can't, but you also said that the way the, the price fluctuated, they changed it to twice a year, or something in the, before the winter.
That's correct. It used to have a very large spike for National Grid in the winter, it was November and May, and now they've changed it, so they, they break up the winter, especially for National Grid, it's now August and February is when the rates change. So, you won't see that 33 cents most likely again, because before, you had November, December, January, and February.
Right. So, yeah, so there is some, there is some modeling that you guys, you folks have done, and the market has done, to come up with these terms, and like you said last time, like you just did now, they changed when the rates can go.
Correct.
The modeling was to help protect us as consumers.
Right. And the town's going to see all those terms, right? We're not just going to bring you an 18 or 36.
Right, right.
We're going to bring you 6 through 36 in six-month increments, and we're going to go through all those different terms, pluses and minuses of each, so.
What you did last time, that's why we settled on 18 months.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda saw that hole.
Anybody else?
It doesn't happen in the act.
Yeah.
I see a bunch of hands, so if you folks want to just tell each other, you can go after me, that's fine, we're good with that.
Hi, Laura Tenelli, 33 Fish Road. My question is, you said that if there's any issues, we call National Grid?
If there's, say if the power went out, you had a problem with your bill, you could call National Grid. All of those things, the, the infrastructure is still National Grid, if you had an issue with the program, I would prefer that you call Colonial Power Group at that 866 number.
Okay, so, National Grid will still come around and do like meter readings?
All of that is them.
Okay, because I've had issues with meter readings, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, National Grid is still your distribution company.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I think I get it, but thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Again, I saw some hands go up, so if you just want to come up and kind of keep track of who's next, appreciate the cooperation.
Hi, Cheryl Lito, 38 West Dudley Road. So, these prices are about the electricity itself, but the bill consists of two charges. One of them is for distribution or.
Transmission and distribution, correct, ma'am.
So, is that affected by choosing any of these plants? Does that change the price for distribution?
It, it does not. So, distribution is the Department of Public Utilities, and they're the ones that monitor and okay those, you know, it's a monopoly that National Grid has, so this has no effect on the top part of your bill, only on the supply portion of your bill.
Is it fair to say that that distribution would be consistent?
I, I wouldn't use the word.
I know, it's kind of nebulous.
Right, I'm just saying to you, they, they file a rate case with the department and ask for more money. I believe it's on an annual basis that you'll be seeing that go up.
Okay, thank you.
So, if you, if you follow the news, just like in the last week or 10 days, the governor had tried to step in after DPU had already said it.
That's correct.
And they, National Grid and some others rolled back 5%, deferred, they didn't take it off your bill, and then they gave one as much as 10%. it off your bill, and then they give one as much as 10%, but they're going to hit us in the summer.
That is correct.
Right.
She's going to give you a $50 rebate in April.
That was today.
Just today.
So, we appreciate Anne has a little insider information that the rest of us doesn't have. Thank you, Anne.
True.
Just, before the gentleman starts, on the distribution side, if you have energy assistance, it comes off the distribution side?
Just so that I get it correct, it, the credit is on your distribution side, but it's off the total bill.
Okay.
So, you'd get this discount off the supply compared to basic service, and then, depending on, on income, you could get anywhere from 42 to 70% off the total bill after that.
Okay, all right.
But the credit shows up on the distribution.
People who have received energy assistance, no, not be impacted.
At all. They'll continue to get that discount.
Okay.
Excellent.
Hi, Jeff Pedini, Five Prospect Ave. What does the town plan to do? Are they opting in, opting out?
We're separate because we're municipal. We have a different...
They have their own contract.
Yeah.
And just so that everyone understands, normally the load profile of the town accounts is more advantageous than a residential load profile, so they're better off staying out and going on their own, and they can go for a longer amount of time.
We just had a few, I don't know if you saw, but six months ago, we had that with water sewer, right? Then they want aggregate.
Right, that's right. We do, we have a third-party supplier that we negotiate every, depending on what the term is, what the best term is, 18, 36 months, something like that. I think we're, I think we're in a 24 right now. I don't remember.
We have a similar program that's specifically municipal.
But we also get solar credits that we've locked into.
Right.
Both from the...
Landfill.
Well, the landfill eventually, but...
Right.
They're at or below 12. I think we're around nine or 10 for some of them.
That makes sense, though. Normally, you have a better load profile, better price.
So the short answer is yes, we're in a program that's a different one.
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, is there any plans for changing meters?
So, the answer is yes. It doesn't have to do with this program, but I can tell you, it's called GridMod. It's grid modernization, and sometime coming to a home near you over the next three to five years, they're going to, then they're going to be fixing smart meters. That's going to change this program because you'll be able to get information. So, right now, we can only change on meter reads, because we have a dumb meter, they don't, it doesn't actually know when you're using the electricity. When that happens, you had a smart meter, within two days, we can switch you in and out of the programs.
What if we don't want a smart meter?
That's city hall fight. Not, not this city hall, DPU. That's a, I think you have, I don't think, believe you have a choice. That's going to be something at the Department of Public Utilities. I don't think you're going to be able to fight it, but I really don't, I'm not an expert there. I do know, probably by the time 2030 runs around, you'll have a smart meter on your, you're supposed to have a smart meter on your house.
And lastly, I don't have the actual envelope for the opt-out. I probably...
Take care.
So, once you've given the envelope, I'm just going to put George on the spot for a minute. George, when you guys went to the gun readers, like a smart meter, right? That was like a man, like, nobody could say, I want my old meter. They had to do it. So it's going to be similar to that. Someone's going to come in and say...
Advance it sooner or later, you know, keep up with the technology.
Yeah. We, you couldn't say, I want my old, like, the old days, they had to go in your house.
Yes.
It benefits, it benefits the consumer, because then we can, we can now detect leaks in the house, theft, things like that. We couldn't do that before. We have to keep up with that.
Thank you, George. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. I knew the answer, but I wanted to get it from the pro.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, you good? You want, any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think too, just because it's recorded, maybe mention solar, just so folks, just, I want to make sure.
It's all going to work the same. There's one little, it's just small. National Grid, if you're a solar customer, if you get S-Rex and any of that, you're going to continue to get your S-Rex. It's a solar program. National Grid always pays basic service. I'm going to use, right now is the example. So, if you're using electricity from the, from the grid, actually drawing off the grid, and you're part of the program, you're going to pay 12.8. Any, any generation that gets extra, they're going to pay you 14.6. National Grid is neutral, right? So they always pay basic service. What I want you to know, so it's kind of a win-win for a solar customer. So you're, you're using at a little lower, and they're crediting you at a little higher rate. But, let's just say that the piece falls across the planet and the 10-cent rate, this is at 12.8, when you're actually drawing on it, and they're only going to credit you that 10 cents. So the knife cuts both ways. It's not like a win-win, right? It just depends on where the rate is. Normally, I just want you to know, normally, we have seen aggregation rates are normally below basic service rates, but it's not always the case. Future savings can't be guaranteed. I just want to make sure I'm clear there.
Right. And if you have credits, you have a credit balance stored up on your bill. You're not going to lose that. It's going to carry over, so nobody's going to lose any of that metering credits they already have. So that's going to carry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep?
You know, what can I say? Jane Harry in 8 Frank's Lane. Two questions. The opt-in, opt-out process, can that be done any number of times over the 18 months?
So, not any number of times, only on a meter read, so consider it like 17 different times if you timed it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you're watching.
That's exactly, would it happen twice?
Yep.
That, you know, because it's every six months.
Okay. And the rate that has been negotiated here, is there, I'm assuming there's a contract for it, that we have this, the town has this.
Yes.
Is there a cap in there so that at renewal, there's, it's guaranteed not to go up over a certain amount?
It, so this contract is a fixed-price contract, but what happens in the marketplace is what happens in the marketplace. So wherever that is, is really where that is. The good news is, is it's not like you have to wait 12 or 17 months to go back out to the marketplace. We're in the marketplace every day, watching the market. So when there's a hole in the marketplace, we're going to be in, we could sign, probably won't, market's high, in April, we could sign a 36-month extension to this 18-month contract. We have full use of the marketplace. We're going, our job is to make sure we're using it to the best of the town's ability. So I just, but what, what the marketplace is in 18 months, if you have that knowledge, we'd love to talk to you.
Got it. Oh, and just one other question. On the kilowatt-hours that shows up, and you can calculate out, will it show on our bill, the 12.8, 26? And it's not going to have like a different?
No different, other than the wording, but it'll still have the exact same calculation, the 12.8 times however many kilowatts, and that's, that's what the cost is.
Okay.
I did want to mention, if you wanted to see on our website, colonialpowergroup.com, we keep all calculators there. So if you wanted to go on there and not, you're not certain about the math, just simply put in your kilowatt-hour usage, it'll show you what the difference in a dollar figure would be.
Okay. Okay. Right. Thank you for your time. Thank you for negotiating this for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jane. Anybody else? Going once, on twice?
If by chance, this is a bad form, I'm willing to talk to you out in the hallway, and just in case this is not the form for everyone, we're willing to answer any questions you might have.
Again, very simple. Call if you want to opt out, bail it in.
That, that's exactly.
Or go on the website for...
If you want to get out. You don't need to do anything if you wish to participate, but make no mistake, that there's, no one's trying to hold you in this program.
Right. It's not a mandate.
Nope.
And know your own, know your own circumstances. Like you said, mine had a buyout, and they waived, they lowered the rate instead of waiving the buyout, so.
I think it's wonderful. I, I think that's great you guys did that. I honestly, that's wonderful.
It was going to be 150, and I said, well, I'm not getting out. And the guy put me on hold, and came back three minutes later. I can beat it. Okay, nine months.
I, I think it's, I think it's great.
Yep. So try that, folks. You good? All right. Thank you again, Colonial.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Yep. Take care. If anybody wants to speak, they're outside.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Next up, we have Town Account, Sarah Monjo. We're going to talk about revenue projections. Sarah, come on up.
Here we go. That mic will work. This one?
Yep.
Probably need it.
High and low.
All right.
You're a very loud person.
Good evening, selectmen. There's no selectwoman here tonight, and members of the Finance and Advisory Committee. Did you guys get a spreadsheet from me on Friday? Okay. Sorry. The accountant gives you all the fun things to look at. I know it's tedious, but if you could see my version of this spreadsheet, it has like 10 years' worth of data that we analyzed across. So, we're in the budget, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. We're in the budget process right now, and the finance team, which is made up of myself, the assessor, Lisa Berg, Rich Camagnani, the treasurer, John, Town Administrator, Ann Olivia, the Assistant Town Administrator, have been gathering, and we've met with some departments on their expenditures. One of the first things we do when we pull a budget together is do a historical analysis of revenues over the years. And then from there, we glean what information we can. We look at projections coming in. We look at information that comes in, estimates from the state on the cherry sheet, which came in a couple months ago. And we try to pull together a projected revenue for the upcoming year. And so, we did this exercise, and prepared the spreadsheet that you have. Backing that spreadsheet up, I have several other spreadsheets where we're looking at the six-month FY25 numbers to date, as well as five years back, going back, actually, six years' worth of data, back to 2018. And then, we worked with Mark Abraham's group a few years ago. I wasn't here, but we worked at projecting revenues into the future. And so, we looked at some estimated factors on moving into another year. So, 2.5% for the major streams, and then looking at trends and developing estimates. So, in summary, if you look at the bottom, we're looking at approximately $23.9 million worth of revenues. That does not include enterprise funds, and it does not include any indirect charges from the enterprise funds that we usually project. At this time, we're negotiating with the Sewer and Water Department, so we don't have a good number to use yet. Historically, it's been about $200,000 that they pay us to support them. So overall, an increase of about $900,000. And when you look at the local receipts, which is something that we have a little bit more control over, it's going up about $430,000 from last year. If you remember, when we set the recap, we dropped the estimated cash receipts, so that we wouldn't leave any money, excess levy capacity on the table. So in the exercise, we looked at the run rates year-to-date on some of those figures and adjusted them accordingly. There, we had to restore from the estimated budget of '25 for '26, some of the things that we cut back in the exercise of the recap. So the big-ticket items there were meals, meals taxes of about $50,000, interest and penalties on real estate and personal property taxes of around $25,000, building permits, $30,000, and the cannabis excise of about 40. So about $150,000 that we had adjusted down and we brought back up for the projection for '25. It's a draft at this point, and we will adjust accordingly as we meet with departments and go over their estimated costs and appropriate needed funds for the upcoming fiscal year. So I know it's tedious. I know there's a lot of information, and I had asked, if you had questions, I don't know how many of you had a chance to look at it. You can send your questions to me. I don't know if any of you have questions right now or concerns.
I'll turn it over to the FAA, Mike.
Well, actually, anybody from the board for us?
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just had, I'm just curious about the parking fines, like, we didn't expect any parking fines in '25, and now we expect parking fines in '26?
The '25, you know, how much is it?
It's like, I mean, it's a hundred, so.
Yeah. We don't really get a lot. When you're talking to small numbers, it's not the focal point. We focus more on the larger ticket items.
Yeah.
And there really haven't been, when we looked at parking fines coming in. I don't know what the exact figure was, but we went through every single line item as a finance team, and if there aren't any, then, you know, a minimum of 100.
Yeah, I guess I'm surprised, but there's things that are zeroed, and then they have numbers now. That's, there's several.
Yeah. And they're usually small. I mean, anything over $10,000, I think, is more. Some things trend away just as time goes on. And I'm new to the process, so I'm learning as we go, but, you know, the energy is much more focused on the larger ticket items on the budget.
Yeah, I just didn't know if something, previously, we didn't track, and it was just, you know, pays back petty cash, and now it's being tracked. I mean, I was just curious.
Yeah. And we were also pretty conservative in the projection for the motor vehicle revenue excise. At one point, I think we brought in about $1.6 million in '24. We're not really seeing that high level coming in. I don't know if people are holding their cars longer, buying used cars, being a little bit more strategic, but that, that as a revenue source isn't escalating at the normal rate that it has been in the past.
I think, I think that excise number two was the...
Previous years. I think we did collect, and Rich could probably speak to it. I see him back there.
Yeah.
But we, I believe that we did get some receipts collected from previous years, which is very difficult to project.
Coming out of COVID too, and people were waiting on cars, we felt maybe, sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. Pivotal point when it comes to excise. So everybody knows, the excise were due last Thursday. So, to go through, hit the hard return as of 3/7 for year-to-date, you're only so far because we've only had the one commitment. According to the registry, sometime this week, the deputy collector is going to go through and get that second bill filed. So this had come up last year, and what's it going to be? We don't know till it gets here, just because the assessor does not have a list of everyone's car. It's just, the information comes in that way. So, fingers crossed, the second commitment that comes in is going to be sizable. Everybody knows, who hasn't paid an excise bill, you get the pink bill, which is going to increase the, the total dollars in, and we're looking for a number to the 630. So right now, we have three months plus of collection time, and there's some teeth. Put you in for a non-renewal. All of a sudden, people start paying those bills. So, we have the best number. That's cash in the bank. Fingers crossed, in the next 30 days, 60 days, we'll be able to update that ahead of, ahead of the budget. So there's, so there's no question. You know, we can point to a number, we can point to the previous year's number, and as your accountant said, they tied in, you know, a reasonable trend.
Right, yeah. We can update the projections as we get closer to...
Rich.
Voted in.
Thanks. Mr. Mayhite.
Yeah, hi, Sarah. Just a couple questions. You mentioned something about, about six months, that you'd look back six months.
Yeah, I, we haven't posted January cash yet.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get that in, yeah, for year-to-date, it, when, I was looking at, we didn't have anything for motor vehicle revenues come in yet.
Right.
Because the bill's just...
Yeah, well, outside of, outside of the excise tax.
But we had, when, when you go back, you can really see the trending. You know, I have this spreadsheet that does, it goes back to 2018 and carries it forward, and then it actually goes out further too. Just, you know, gives you a good sense on, are we headed in the right path, and what do we have to do? It's a management tool. We can use it.
Is it, are we working towards getting cash reconciliation a little closer to the budget?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's definitely a point that Rich and I are struggling with. We had, we leaned real estate, we leaned utility bills to the real estate bills, and with the new VEDAR system, there were some things that weren't linked properly, so that kind of slowed everything down, and we wanted to fix it before we moved forward. And we wanted to fix it before we moved forward. So, I'm pretty much done with December, as Rich can attest to, we've been through it. And I'll be posting January, and hopefully, February will come in right after that. So, the goal is to have, I would say, by the end of a following month, to have all the cash in and have more timely information.
Does anybody else have any question?
So, if I could, through the chair, for the estimate, we had actual payments posted, not necessarily reconciled, so call it unaudited figures as of last Friday. If I were to do it today, probably be up by whatever my two assistants did after I hit the hard return in today. And as far as the linking of the general ledger, there's a few issues where somebody's posting something and it's not squaring the account up. So, what was in balance on month one, all of a sudden shows up as an issue. So, it's a matter of, it's forensically accounting, trying to figure out where the link is, is bad, but...
We'll get more efficient fixing those things moving forward.
On, just a few of these. On the cannabis...
Yes.
...revenues, do you know where we're at, at this point?
Yeah.
Collections?
We are at cannabis, we've received $87,000 to date. So...
All right, so that makes sense then?
Mm-hmm.
A hundred, okay.
Yeah, and there's some issues with some of the establishments that would trigger the excise tax, so we don't really know what's going on there. Yeah, but that's one we'll wait a little bit to see.
The, I guess I get a question for Rich. So, the betterment principle and interest, that's gonna be factored into your budget for, for your revolving debt, right? Just a quick question, Rich. On Tobin Farms, you have Tobin Farms, you have St. Anthony Road, Partridge Hill Road, are they different bonds? Or is it all done in the same bond?
Well, Rich is getting that, I'll just update the board and the FAA, that the DMA is in receivership, it's a whole different structure right now. So, that, getting to that $100,000 is gonna be, we have to see where we're at. So, it's, it's hard to project what we're gonna actually collect. I think a hundred thousand is probably a good number for now, but...
But it could be less?
Well, it's not gonna be less than 87, we know that.
Oh, no.
It won't be a deal breaker, you know, we stay within the, we stay close to 100 without, 87 actual, 100 projected, so...
And for those at home...
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven for fiscal year '25, for budgeting for '26, so...
They owe the Commonwealth, so the Commonwealth always gets their money, and so I'm pretty, pretty confident that that's won't be one of the first things that they pay out.
So, for those that don't know, DMA is greatest hits, the dispensary on Jay Sav is currently in receivership, although we are still getting our indicated excise tax.
Yeah.
Very, sorry.
Is it the same debt issuance? So, the August 1st, 2023 issuance that we did takes care of Tobin Farms and Partridge Hill. St. Anthony is a separate one that was put in for September of '24. So, it was this year, we'll make our first payment next year.
So, it bumped up, bumped up a whole percent in one month? The interest rate?
I'm sorry, I missed...
St. Anthony's is, you got it, St. Anthony's at eight percent?
So, when you're, when you're looking at your interest rates, you are looking at the two percent that the town adds to it as part of the betterment repayment program.
Okay, so, so the bond on Tobin is at seven. A month later, the bond on St. Anthony's is at eight?
Thirteen months later. August 1st, 2023 was the bigger one.
Sorry.
And then, a year later, September, the September 2024 issuance was a serial note. It wasn't a bond issued in the marketplace. So, shorter period of time, and interest rates have risen.
Okay.
How's that working, Rich? The people already assessed on their bills, that started at the, yes?
Yes.
We did third, we did third quarter billing, right?
On the third quarter billing. So, we go through, the assessor sends out the preliminary bill, which is just the mathematical average of the previous four quarters. The third quarter, which is going to be your first actual, so the, have your rate hearing, go through and sort of back into the rate for the budget. That third quarter is going to have water sewer liens, it's gonna have the incoming expense fine from the assessors for the commercial property, for nobody who'd returned the questionnaire from the assessors, and it will also be your betterments. And there's a specific coordination on how they get paid off.
And it's... What's the phone cost then?
Yes, unfortunately.
Up and down, up and down the floors. I don't mean to laugh, I get one, so... Any other questions on that issue, Mike?
On the betterment?
Or whatever you are...
No, I just had a few, two accounts, I just wanted to kinda get clarification. The ambulance receipts?
Yeah.
It's a significant increase.
Yes, yeah.
Why don't you ask me about that?
Sure. Chief?
Thanks. I met with Sarah, and based on our increased call volume and the last few months' receipts, I think it'll be even more than that, but those numbers were conservative. Plus, we also getting a $45,000 mass health reimbursement for $45,000 on top of that.
So, is that for one year, the 45, or are they backpaying you some more?
No, that's one year. It's usually between 40 and 46.
So, mass health always evens up?
I was gonna bring it up when I came up and presented my budget, so...
Do we know through the chair, do we, do you know where you're at for collections right now?
I didn't bring the sheet with me, but it's like, it's, I wanna say it's between 80 and $100,000 over what it was last year. I mean, it's in all the monthly reports I submit to the board.
But your percentage's high too, your collection rates would weigh, where they were in the past, you're up...
Well, actually, the rates, the rates are a little higher, and the volume, the call volume's a little higher. In the last few months, we've had more advanced life support calls, which bill at a higher rate.
Excellent. You're not gonna need any more money for our billing department?
What do you mean?
Well, your billing, your billing, your billing stayed the same, so...
Yeah, I mean...
A hundred thousand dollars.
I've had enough the last, just wait till I come up. I'm next.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, so you're, you're actually, in December, you were at 415 for the year to date, so, I mean, and I know some of that coming in was last year, but you were really high.
Yeah, I think we got like $70,000 in January, $78,000 in January, $83 in February, and vice versa. I don't remember, I don't have the sheet.
Yeah, well, you've got, I, I don't have through January yet, so, but...
That's, that's good news. Meals tax, you had way up too.
Well, it goes up, I had dropped it when we did the recap, that was one of the line items. We go after items that, you know, you really don't, you're not guaranteed, or the trending. So, so we're gonna put it back where it was.
Okay. In recycling stickers too? That's significant.
It's going back up to the level. And actually, I did an analysis, working with Aura, who does, who sells the tickets, and she has everything broken down by the number of each population.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a pretty good number.
Excellent.
And that's another one we had lowered in the recap process.
What, what's the bounce check thing? How come that went down?
That, that's small, isn't it? Is it like...
Yeah, it's budgeted way down.
It's just that, it's the returned, it's a return, returned check fee, $25 for a returned, returned check or 1%. So, if you bounce a check and you've, you know, paid this giant tax bill, $7,000, it's a $70 charge. It's, we have very few of them. More times than not, the returned check fee gets placed onto something, then it goes into collections, and we don't see it until much later. Also, if somebody's bounced a check and they're in the next morning because they lost their phone, their email got hacked, and they hacked the bank account, there's a bit of clemency for extraordinary circumstances. Most, most of the checks are scanned within 24 hours, so nobody's floating anything or doing anything like that.
If you, if you were to guess, end of December, where would you be in revenue on that right now?
Probably got more in my wallet.
Okay.
All right, so there's, it's...
Well, I, I don't know how much you got in your wallet, I'm sure it's up there, but more than mine.
A modest amount, a modest amount. Like, like I said, it's a thousand times easier to go through, just reverse the payment, and you add the demand in addition to. And if you've, you've bounced one check, there's a good chance you're, you're not going to follow it up with, with cash. So, it's, it's later, and it's never been a substantial amount. I think one year, we had a few hundred dollars.
We're at $50 as of December 31st.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think it probably declines with more people paying online too.
Yeah.
Army of people paying cash for their excise bills, it's, or, or doing it, doing it online. You know, you never get a non-sufficient funds if you're using your Visa to pay through Unipay, so...
Well, you up there, Rich?
Sure.
Tax liens?
Sure.
$80,000?
Which lien are you looking at, sir?
Tax liens, the liens redeemed?
Oh.
Yes.
I, I thought you, you were still on the checks. That's gonna, that's depending on the activity of people coming in.
Right.
So, it's not a consistent...
It's not a consistent number, if anything, it, it bounces every other year. You go through previous year, tax liens, go through and get, anybody who receives a demand and has a tax title, it gets added to it. Really, the mortgage companies are the ones who are working very hard to make sure that they don't get to that point. So, if you had a water sewer lien, you had an income and expense lien, anything like that, VEDAR has a direct connect with CoreLogic, and will report out anything that's more than 30, 60, 90 days, and they get the follow-up. So, each year, the tax title amount just goes smaller and smaller. Think of what happened in 2007, 2008. You had a lack of compliance. Now, you have twice as many people looking at whether or not the bill is being paid, and whether or not there's an active mortgage, or a second mortgage, or another encumbrance on a property. So, the cottage industry known as, you know, you know, the, the CoreLogic, they're, I think they bought their competition, Loretta. The bank doesn't drive down and pay your taxes. If they're escrowed, there's a third party that goes through and aggregates all of that, and then gets that all paid. Plus, they're the ones doing the compliance, making sure that, hey, wait a second, Mr. Mayhout is showing, is showing outstanding, why is this? So, the, the number of tax liens are declining. Our chance for a foreclosure is even lower because, as of November 1st, they changed all of the tax-taking rules. So, what used to be a involved process has now been changed into a rather elaborate process with several hoops. You'd have, you had in the newspapers, Hennepin County in Minnesota? Anyway, the tax title reform has gone through a lot of things. There were fear of equity theft. So, at the end of the day, we'll be happy to take everything prior to it getting to that point. We'll just be deliberate in everything we do. We still get the 14% instead of the 16%, but there is very little legalese to, to have to, to get that tax lien perfected, and then to go through and foreclose on it.
Does anybody else, anyone have any questions?
Always available for questions.
Yep. And, and again, expect an update soon as we get the commitment for the second excise. We'll have an idea of what's out there. You've got the ballpark number of 70% being collected within, what, 30, 40 days of issuance? So, that gives you a pretty good mark. Plus, everything that was already mailed out, hadn't been collected, is gonna be coming in as well.
Any questions from the crowd? Mr. Clark? Other Mr. Clark?
Yes, there are two of us. Good evening. Richard Clark, 65 Airport Road. Thank you for all the detail that you've gone through, it's pretty impressive. What was revenue for the previous year? Is 23.9, 23.9 is projected currently?
Yeah, it was 23, just slightly over 23.
So, it's...
For these numbers, like, I, I didn't factor in the enterprise entities at this time, and we didn't do directs. But on the same level, it was 23.047, I think, and then 23.25.
Thank you.
And that was within directs, eh?
Again, we're following, she talked about the Abrams report, and I know Mr. Rudick will probably speak to it, because you weren't here when he did it. We're following their guidelines about conservative projections, like, we don't have crazy line items in there that have, I'll make it up, 10 or 15% increase is built in. We're pretty, you've been on here now long enough, it's pretty conservative.
Yeah.
So, we come with that number, and we try to stay pretty close, and that was, again, Abrams report, and I usually, as long as I've been on the board, that's been my usual practice, Richard's been here as long as I have, that's our general practice, we're pretty conservative.
Agreed, Mr. Chairman. The, the exercise today is to come up with the best set of numbers. When you hit your actuals in middle of July, you'll be able to sit down with Board of Assessors, the whole team, and, okay, the original estimate was $1 million, we took in 1.2, is it reasonable to think we can match that for the next year? And the data would be there to say yes, or the data would be there to say perhaps not. And again, we don't, we don't wanna be chasing our tail at the end of May, saying there was a very generous estimate that we didn't meet.
We don't come back and say, oh, we can do maybe $2 million next year, we build that number, and if anything, we stay at the 1, 2, and we get over it, we get over it generally.
Yeah, we do have, you know, justification for just about every line item that we, you know, we looked at, so...
Governor's budget hasn't come out yet, right? I know.
Well, there's the governor's budget in, but it hasn't gone...
I don't think so. So, the lottery aid, where did you get that?
We get it off the cherry sheet, they give us an estimate.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna go up in...
Mm-hmm, that's what the estimate is.
Really? Okay.
They cut Kino down to what?
I was gonna say.
You gotta play fast, and keep playing, so...
That's why I'm just gonna put a little star next to for...
You can go right online and see what the estimated cherry sheet numbers are, and they tie.
Yeah.
You can find it through DLS too, right?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, through the cherry sheet, through DLS.
And, I guess, I was trying, what's, I mean, we're going on three years here now on directs, what's, then we have study come in and tell us what the indirects?
I can taste it. So, we're getting really close. We have another meeting, I think, the last time I talked to Matt was last week, I think he was getting some additional information from Rich, or not?
We met last week twice, so...
Okay, so...
And a meeting tomorrow. And a meeting tomorrow again, so it's, it, it, it's a matter of dotting i's, crossing t's. Methodology is very similar, but you have a third party driving the process. What does this office do, what does that office do, what does this office do? And every time you refine the process, you're listing out under a separate set of eyes what goes on. Somebody says, well, what about this, what about this, what about this? The process is gonna change and be reduced in some areas and increased in the other areas. It's just, you had a ninety-eight, ninety-eight study published in ninety-nine, couple of changes made along the way, and...
Do we have a rough idea? You were to make a guess?
I, I think we're gonna see a net increase, but nine.
So two-twelve is...
Two-twelve is, I think, is a good placeholder, I don't think we decrease that amount.
No?
I've been at the granular level trying to...
And again, I happened to come in last week and Olivia was working on it, and Mr. Abrams also at the same time, so it's a, I'll say daily because every time I come in, there's an update, verbal update, oh, we had a meeting today, or, you know, the finance team discussed this, so they're working on it, Mike, and I agree, it's been a while, but we're getting there.
Okay.
Everybody's pulling in the same direction, I think, right, George? Twice I got you tonight, sorry.
Any other questions for the accountant, the treasurer, I see the assessor here, if she would like to say a few words, she's more than welcome. Everything's good, she's good? Anybody else? All right, well, we thank everyone for the work they do, and Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The answers? Let me see if I can find the agenda again, hang on a sec.
It's pretty optimistic.
Fire play.
Very optimistic. I think it's very optimistic.
All right, next up, we have the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget request. First up is fire EMS, Chief Kocianowski.
Do you have the sheet to put up there, or do you want me to just read it off of here?
Chief, you wanna do the podium, you wanna come up here with us, it's up to you, get comfortable there.
What would you rather have me do? I can sit if you want, I can actually...
It might be easier if we people could question. They got questions, they can just come up and...
Middle chair gets you two microphones.
This one?
I am well.
All right, good evening. So I met with Olivia, John, and Sarah last week, and we went through the budget, so I'll go by what's up there, line ten through twenty-two is all contractual agreements. Line thirty-four, education incentive is a contractual agreement, and clothing allowance was a contractual agreement, so those are all increases. Every single other line was level funded from last year. And we took a little bit out of gas, and I also added a little bit to overtime after a discussion with Mr. Mayotte last year, so I decided to add a little bit to overtime because that's always a problem, and it's gonna be a problem this year again, so... Other than that, it's, it's pretty much the same budget as last year, it came out to like a forty-six thousand dollar increase, but I believe my revenues will exceed the forty-six thousand dollars, so my revenues will actually be more than the increase in my budget.
Again, Chief, you can explain it, but for people that don't know at home, ambulance receipts do not stay with the fire department, they deposit it through the general fund.
Right, but if, if I did not generate that revenue, they'd still have to find the money somewhere else to fund my budget, so indirectly, it still funds forty percent of my budget.
No, I'm agreeing, though, people, it does not go right in and wash through. Mr. Johnson?
Chief, just to restate it, the, the increase in the budget is less than the increase in the revenue change?
Correct.
Okay, so revenue, if the revenue's going up by more than forty-six thousand?
Correct.
When you're trending, you just showed us that you're trending.
And I, when I met with the four of them, I kept my numbers conservative, I actually, because I don't want to be disappointed, I don't want people to be disappointed, but I honestly feel, based on the last few months, what we've brought in, that it's gonna be more than what we're projecting.
Excellent.
So Chief, everything you need is in this, there's no shortage?
I have one capital request, I don't know if we're going over that tonight, it was a deputy chief's vehicle, I know I have to meet with capital for that, but that was sixty-eight thousand, his vehicle's fifteen years old and has a hundred and forty thousand miles, and I'm starting to put a lot of money into it maintenance-wise.
That was what I was gonna ask you, where, what's, is there a maintenance account in here?
It's the fire expense account.
Fire expense?
Actually, it can be split between fire expense and ambulance call and career expense, because if it's an amb, ambulance call and career expense covers like replacement of EMS supplies such as IVs, drugs, perishable items that you use on a patient and you have to replace, but if it's an ambulance repair, it could come out of that line, like the fire apparatus would come out of the fire expense line, other than annual recurring costs, which would come out of maintenance agreements.
So if you blow a motor or something like that, that's covered in that?
Yeah, well, that's gonna hurt a little bit, but, yeah.
Okay.
Board members, any questions?
We're taking, just as a reminder, we're taking delivery of a new rescue engine, right?
Yeah, that was the one that was approved over two years ago.
So that other engine is gonna be retired?
Yes, it's gonna be, while, I had bought a used engine to replace Engine Two. Engine Two ended up in the Dominican, we put it on an ISI bid, so I mean, I'm sure we'll get something for Engine Three, but Engine Three's in worse shape than Engine Two was, I mean, we're putting Band-Aids on it to keep it running, you can ask George.
And we think that's coming when?
George, you're up next.
April.
April.
In fact, they just asked me for a fifty percent payment because they're about to complete it, but I have to get it, I have to, I told them I need a title in RMV one first.
Because as soon as Mr. Mayotte said blown engine, I thought Engine Three, but we're gonna get the heck out of here.
Yeah, it's gonna be gone.
Shouldn't have to worry about that.
Hope to cross your fingers when it rolls.
Trust me, I drove it, it feels like it's gonna fall apart.
FAA, any questions, FAA?
Thank you.
Anybody from the crowd have any questions for fire and EMS? Thank you, Chief, good budget. Next up, highway department. Highway, cemeteries, beach, future playground, current playground, parking lots. Am I missing anything?
Transfer station.
Transfer, oh, what a big one, transfer station. Transfer sta, okay, I missed that one, thank you, Kerry. Mr. Gatski, good evening.
Most of our is up, some of them for contract wages through the union contract. We did put in for a couple vacant spots that we've been vacant for a couple years now, so we did put in for those. Put in for a little bit, I believe, twenty, twenty thousand for snow and ice, salt, salt's going up. We've been over on snow and ice pretty much every year, we're still only at to one-fifteen if we put in for that budget. A lot of these prices are, I mean, a lot of them are from the following years from like twenty-four's budget, or we got cut last year quite a bit, so it's like in between twenty-four and twenty-five budget. So it seems like we went up a real lot, but it's pretty much right in the line of twenty-four's. We're, let's see, on the gas and diesel, we've only, we might not even make it through this year for our gas and diesel, because the prices that went up on the gas and diesel, all that maintenance, our equipment's getting older, we put it back in the same as last year's budget because we got cut, so we're not really, it looks high, but we, there's a couple, like I said, vacant spots in there. So right now, we're only down to four guys, what we used to have, ten.
Hey, you can explain a little bit, too, we talked about the tires, for example.
Yeah, I just had to buy tires for loader, we blow a tire on a loader. Luckily, I found some, new takeoff tires, luckily, and I got them for five thousand dollars. Transmission in our backhoe is broken right now, right now, that's forty-seven, almost forty-seven thousand dollars for a broke blown transmission in our backhoe, so we're, we're in the highway department right now.
Do we have a backhoe on, on your capital?
Our backhoe's a two thousand twelve, it's still in good shape, but a new backhoe's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so I weighed out the options, it's got like six thousand miles on it, so I figured we might as well just fix, fix what we have. I think we can get by for a while.
Any chapter ninety funds available for that?
I can't use chapter ninety funds, but I can, there's a, a fair share of money that we got with the state, so I can repair it, because otherwise, I don't know what we would do.
I was thinking that when you said blown motor.
Yeah.
So people understand at home.
Our backhoe's been down for a couple months now, so waiting for parts, so...
It's not gonna get any easier either.
No.
They gave you five guys, we still have nine.
We had, we had a guy, he left, he went over to the sewer department, so now we're down to, I said, four guys, that's included my, my mechanic. I have a seasonal guy that works just the winters, but his times, he'll be leaving next few weeks, he works the winters for us, so that's why, like I said, we did a pretty much on that.
Is there any used backhoes out there that are worth having a backup?
Yeah, like I said, we should be getting ours back in the next, I'm hoping, few weeks. So that caterpillar getting repaired, like I said, it was, estimate is forty-seven thousand right now, and hopefully that's all. I did buy, I did buy a used one-ton pickup, one-ton dump, because one of ours was junk, fell apart, and I bought a used one for place mortgages, it's got thirty, thirty thousand miles on it, we paid thirteen thousand dollars for, instead of going sixty thousand dollars, so I've been doing some shopping, we bought a used catch basin truck cleaner, there's a new one, is two hundred and something thousand. I found a used one, it's an older truck, it's in good shape, we need to keep up with the MS four in stormwater, bought that truck for nine thousand dollars, it'll get us by for a few years, so I've been trying to shop and keep stuff down and do what we can do.
And again, we throw acronyms around sometimes, the M fours, the highway department has to do the catch basins and account for material used.
Yep.
And if you don't do it, we get fined, and the reason why we know that is, a couple administrators ago, we got fined back-to-back years because they didn't do the proper maintenance nor the reporting, so, like I said, we throw acronyms around, I want people to understand what they mean.
I mean, like, ah, the road maintenance, maintenance is up, but asphalt costs more, pretty much, we went up, I mean, general, pretty much stayed almost the same at general expenses, machine maintenance is RLI, parts and stuff, so that's up a little bit. We had a small capital got cut last year and stuff, so that's for like lawn mowers and rakes and shovels and stuff like that, so...
Any board member questions for the superintendent? Anybody else in the FAA with a question? Anybody from the crowd with a question? Thank you, Mr. Gatski. Next up, we'll have police, Chief Collins.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
So if you look at my budget, most of the line items, the salary, salary line items are per contract, so there's really not much that I can move one way or another, we're actually in the middle of a contract right now, so those numbers could actually go up a little bit depending on how we negotiate a union contract with the, with the patrol officers. One significant part you'll see on the budget is the vacation buyback went up, that's in the contract where each officer or each employee can buy back up to half of their vacation time, so I had to bring that up a little bit because over the last couple of years, more officers have been buying back their vacation time. And the other one is the education incentive. Some of the officers went out and continued with college, got their degrees, which I strongly encourage, and that moved up a little bit based on the contract also. And the last is the, you'll see that I'm trying to add a new patrol position. When I started back over twenty years ago, we had sixteen full-time officers, including the police chief. Right now, we have sixteen full-time officers, so our staffing has not changed in over twenty years. If you look at the average in Massachusetts per resident, we should be at twenty-one officers. If you look at the FBI standards recommendation, we should be at twenty-four. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, but if we don't get this patrol position, there's more trainings, there's more required by the state, it's gonna drive the overtime budget up. So what happens is that position actually saves in overtime, so if I don't get that position, I would have to increase the overtime budget by probably fifteen to twenty thousand, depending on how it sways. The expenses, I moved them up a little bit, I'm planning on looking into body cameras, probably not next year, but trying to get a policy, trying to get some quotes, but eventually, that's gonna raise that up a little bit. It's not the, the expense is not in actually purchasing the body cameras, there's a lot of grants out there, it's the iCloud. Webster pays, I believe, a little over twenty thousand dollars for data alone. Our department would probably be looking at about fifteen thousand dollars just for the, to store that data, never mind having somebody actually run it, so, but I'll be down the road hopefully next year. So again, if you look at my budget, a lot of it is contractual, I have made some, some adjustments to some of the officers, depending on the steps where they fall and the wages, but other than that, a lot of it's out of my control as far as the other wages.
Any board member questions for the chief? Thank you for presentation, chief. FAA questions?
When did the animal control go under the police? Was that, is that this year, or?
So we took over the animal control this year, we have an officer that is certified, Louis Pacheco, he's certified, so we used to have an animal control officer that was on-call, he's pretty much there for forty hours, so while he's on shift, he can handle a lot of the stuff. We have, right now, he's injured, so we have a second officer that's jumped into his role. Eventually, maybe it's something we can work out with the union where we have one officer certified and a backup officer, so that covers more shifts. So it, the ACO position falls on, usually falls under either the board selectmen or the police department. If you look at most departments, it's, falls under the police department, it's just we, during the budget issues, during your override, we kind of jumped in, helped out with the role, and eventually, maybe, you know, maybe we can change it a little bit different, but right now, it's an officer that's taking on that extra responsibility.
What are, what are we using for vehicle for that? Are we using a pickup truck, or?
So, so right now, Officer Pacheco is also the K-nine officer, so we have his vehicle retrofitted for the K-nine, so if need be, he can either use his vehicle, but then he's gotta drop his K-nine off at home or not bring him, or we have a pickup truck that we utilize for a lot of animal calls. In fact, the highway department has helped us out this year because there's been a lot of issues of raccoons, a lot of sick raccoons, and we handle those calls. We can just figure out the rest, how that goes, but we, we handle a lot of those calls in day shift.
Imagine, the highway department, and a backhoe with pick 'em truck.
But the highway department has helped us out with, obviously, the disposal and all that stuff, but we've taken on that role pretty much.
Anybody else? Anybody from the crowd? Come on, Jen, come on up, Jane. Yep. Get your monies, Russ.
Just your question, your comment about the storage to the cloud for the body cams, have we looked into, I mean, I know we're not at that point yet, but maybe getting an aggregate from multiple towns so you could get, purchase a larger quantity of storage? purchase a larger quantity of storage at a lesser rate, like between Webster-Dudley, Southbridge, Oxford, or something like that?
So the problem is, nobody's gonna wanna do that because it's part of evidence. Uh, all, all of the body cameras are used as evidence in, in court, and we have to have a person responsible at our department for that portion, and what happens is there's so many different body cameras out there. If you look at, uh, Webster, uh, Oxford, they're probably using two different systems. If you look at Spencer, same deal, so, um, right now, there's nothing universal as far as sharing the cost. Uh, each department, pretty much, it falls on each town. And the problem is that with the post commission, they, they come up with standards and everything else, and when, when the chiefs ask them about the cost, they just tell us, go to the town and request it. They don't care about the cost, they, if they implement a rule, that's what they want us to abide by.
That's unfortunate. Because I would think you could get some body of storage that would be a lot less expensive.
We do, we do share a lot of costs, like we have a regional, uh, task force, we have a regional SWAT team, we have a regional, uh, SEMLAC unit where we, we share resources, whether it's the K nine, the drones, the SWAT team. Um, so we do, we do try to maximize whatever we can, but when it comes to something like this, each town, well, each department is responsible for basically their evidence, it's, it's, it falls under the evidence, so we would have to make sure that we control it, uh, if we ever get, uh, we wouldn't want us, somebody else in control of it and then messing it up for us.
Sure, no, I totally agree. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Buzia.
Uh, yes, I was just wondering, is it police policy that it's specifically like cloud storage for access for like other departments or agencies, or could you store it locally as well?
So you could do, uh, you could do it locally, the problem is, uh, there's so much data that, uh, unless you have a really good server in your station, it's cheaper to pay somebody to store data because you have to store so much, uh, so many days, so many months of that data, that it's actually better off to have a, a cloud somewhere because then it prevents people from hacking in and all nine yards, so it's easier. And on top of that, the district attorney has access to some of that body camera footage. So once you give them the code to get in, they can actually pull that data, and it's a lot easier for court, court purposes. If you, if we give the DA the access to our server, uh, I don't think we'd want the DA accessing the town server. That's why it's a lot easier to use their cloud storage.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
It's on its term too, right? See, if you might do a body cam tonight and the case comes up eighteen months, I mean, you have hearings and stuff, but.
They have, but they also changed the ruling now that they want the discoveries of any evidence pretty much within the day of the arraignment, so, um, it's almost impossible, but then they changed the ruling where they're giving us a little bit of timeframe, but, um, that, that's another challenge that we're, we're facing with the DA's office right now and the whole state.
Yeah, how long do you have to hold it? Like you would think, I don't know, a year, like for?
If it's for criminal issues, we preserve it, it all depends on departments, we have to set up a policy which, uh, that's gonna be probably during negotiations, we're gonna have to have the, uh, a policy drafted and agree with the union.
So for traffic, you don't have to keep it set?
Uh, we would keep it, and then, um, there's different ways you can save it for a certain period of time. Um, it, it all depends on the policy.
Okay.
I'm not saying that you would keep it for ten years, but you might have to keep it for an extended period of time.
Fall asleep, yeah.
Just in case, uh, so that's the other problem is that in, with post, they could go back to, uh, a complaint from five years ago. But if you don't have the data, then how do you try to prove the officer's innocence? So there's a lot of complications.
Further questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Well, going up next, I know we have departmental communications, and I believe library director Nicole Messier is up first.
I have to bring my computer because I can't see. Good evening, everyone. So this is our, just a quarterly check-in, um, but I'm a little behind on the quarter. So I think last time I was here, we were talking about our strategic plan for the library, which has been complete and submitted to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, that was done on January twenty-first, it was approved on the twenty-third. Um, this will make the library eligible to receive LSTA grants, the Library Services and Technology Act, um, which is the only federal program providing funds exclusively for libraries, supporting a range of services and technology to every community in the US. Um, if you wanted me to read more about the grants, you can check the Institute of Museum and Library Services website or the MBLC website. Um, so the document is on our website, um, everyone's welcome to look at it, um, it has a lot of the community statistics. Um, we did a survey with a town where two hundred and fifty-eight, um, residents participated, we had soar exercises, um, and community groups. So if you go to our website, you can read the whole document, um, but I just wanted to quickly talk about the five, or excuse me, the six goals that we, um, put into place for the next five years. Um, they're very broad, so it'll be my responsibility to, um, communicate our short-term goals to the Board of Library Trustees every year. Um, so our first goal is to offer dynamic and high-quality services and programming for all members of the community. Uh, second goal is to support the use of emerging technologies that aid in closing the digital divide, which is a huge, um, a huge job for libraries right now, making sure people have the computers and the wifi that they need to stay current with job markets, um, and being able to be employable. Um, goal number three is the library will have a stronger presence in the community, um, for advocacy. And we just had our legislative breakfast last month at the library, which was a lot of fun, so. The goal, goal four is the library will maintain a well-trained, engaged, and enthusiastic staff, which is really important, um, to give our community the best library that, that we can be. Goal five is to provide an up-to-date collection that is suited to the community's needs and interests. And then finally, our goal six is the library will maintain and enhance the building and grounds to provide a safe, accessible, and welcoming space. Um, one of the things that I always like to say is libraries are changing, um, and we need to be able to change with what the community wants and needs, so of course, I go right into my counts because I love statistics. Um, so I'm gonna try to keep everything for, um, the same time period, July through February. Um, as you can see, for FY twenty-five, we're off to a great start, we've had almost thirty-five thousand people in the building. Not unique people, of course, um, people tend to come back more than once.
For the breakfast?
Exactly, right? Um, so we're definitely seeing some growth in that area. Um, so a question that we get a lot, well, who's using the library? Is anybody reading books anymore? Yes, they are reading books. Um, the next slide will show you that, um, our physical checkouts, this goes back to July of twenty twenty-three to February of twenty twenty-five. Um, we typically circ four thousand books a month, um, for FY twenty-five, we're almost up to five thousand books a month. And that's a really, um, that's a positive increase, and we like to see that. So people are reading. Um, if you go to the next slide, these are our physical checkouts, so this could be books, library of things, this could be DVDs, this is any item that's a physical item from the library. You can see that for FY twenty, FY twenty-five, we're up fifty-eight percent. I threw in FY twenty-three because FY twenty-four, we weren't at a full staff, it was a strange year for us at the library, so I don't wanna inflate what we're doing, um, so FY twenty-three kind of gives you a little bit of, um, background for that. And what I find really interesting on the next slide is people are moving towards digital, but they are also still using our physical items, so our digital items, which include ebooks, e-audio, and e-magazines are up twenty-five percent year over year. And the next slide, program attendance is also up. Um, we are trying to hit all of the age demographics, um. I think we're doing a pretty good job of it, uh, this year, year to date, we've had almost seven thousand attendees at programs at the library, which is really important. Um, another cornerstone of what we try to offer. Um, if anybody's interested, last year, um, that number would have been about twenty-two hundred attendees. Which again, is not really a fair number because we weren't at full staff, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it look like it's more than what it is. Um, and then these next slides, I'll just go through really fast because I know everybody's probably waiting for the next meeting, but, um, upcoming events, right now, we have in a small art show for the Bay Path Regional Vocational High School kids. We're trying to post everything on Facebook and social media too, so for people that can't come into the building and see it. Um, that will be in the Fells Room until the thirty-first. This Thursday, we have March thirteenth, Celtic Celebration Songs and Stories, Ireland, Scotland, and Wales. Um, Cultural Council funded that grant for us, so we're excited about that. Um, we have weekly movies that we offer every Tuesday at one PM in the Fells Room. We also have a monthly Once Upon a Crime Book Club, if you're a true crime junkie, this one's for you, it's the first Friday of every month. Um, growing every month, people love that book club. Um, we also started a Cook the Book, Book Club of third Monday of every month. Um, this month, they are doing Dinner in One, so we pick the book and the community picks the rest, uh, the recipe that they want. Um, we also have an adult program called Eight Perky Pairing, Chocolate, and Coffee, that's registration required if you're interested in learning the history of those things. Family events, we have our guest reader once a month, every month, uh, Mr. Desto was in the house, uh, tonight before I left, and there must have been thirty-five people in the children's room waiting to see him, so that was pretty exciting. Um, storytimes every week, um, in the storytime room, Kathy, our new children's librarian, is doing a phenomenal job growing, um, that offering for people. The spring, I'm, I swear, I'm almost done, I, I really, I pared it down, I only went through April. Um, the spring egg hunt will be happening in April again, this is a great program, it's all ages, it's all day. We wanna serve people that go to work in the morning, that have kids in school, and can't get here, um, until they get out of work after five, so, um, we set eggs around the whole library, adult area, children's area, everywhere. And it kind of gives the chi- the kids a chance to wander and have a little bit more fun in the adult areas that they don't tend to get to see too much, so. That's on April tenth. Um, we're planning our April vacation activities, Mark Parisi is gonna be in the house, um. He is an award-winning cartoonist, um, so we're getting that age group seven to twelve, which tends to get left out a little bit because they go to school. Uh, we also have Anne Marie Safaei coming with the Daughters of the American Revolution for a Paul Revere program. Records and Burpee Zoo will be there April twenty-fourth, also, that's a huge, um, draw for the community. And finally, last slide, I promise. Um, the Friends of the Public Library will be doing their book sale April seventeenth through the nineteenth. We are taking donations starting April fifth, we're asking residents to hold on to their donations, we don't have a lot of room for storage, but we definitely are appreciative of what is donated, all the proceeds from the book sale go back to the library and pay for all the wonderful programming that you just saw. But really, what I would like to say to people is, if you wanna, if you're not using the library, please use the library, there is something for everyone, if there's not, we're not doing something right. Uh, follow us on Facebook, Instagram, we have our e-newsletter that you can reach right on our website, and then you will be the first to know about all of the events and happening. We have things booked out, uh, through October right now, so.
Excellent. Any questions from the board members to Sarah, I mean, um, Nicole, sorry? FAA? Anybody in the crowd?
Are you so, are your numbers before COVID compared to now?
That's a great question, that's why I tried to throw in those twenty-three, so I'm hoping by next year, I'll have a much better trend for you. Everything that happened during COVID, I've found that the Pearl took a little bit longer to recover from than other libraries did, and I think a lot of that is reaching out instead of pulling back. So we're off to a great start, the end of FY, FY twenty-four was fantastic, um. I don't really have a good number for you, so I apologize, I love looking at those trends, I just, I don't wanna give you something that's not fair, you know?
We're so, we're so far removed from it now, I mean, you'd think they would even out, but I was just curious if it was even bigger back then, truly.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that, didn't you bring that number in on your first quarterly report that you did?
The pre-COVID?
COVID, I thought you had those numbers on.
I, I do have it, and I keep track of it with the people counts, and I, it's in, it's actually in my trustees' reports every month. But I kind of backed that number out now because I felt like we could kind of look at FY twenty-four moving forward. Uh, I do have those numbers, and I can definitely share them with you. They're just, you know, we're recovered, we can say that with full confidence now.
Recovered.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have kept up here before, chief, but I wanted to let Nicole do her thing, we have Chief Collwitz with the officer opening, police officer vacancy.
Um, about two weeks ago, Officer James Meschel Giovanni gave me, advised me that he was in a, he was in the process of trying to get appointed, uh, trying to get on Carlisle Police Department. About two weeks ago, he accepted a position there. Um, tried talking him out of it, but unfortunately, Carlisle, uh, has benefits that Dudley just can't compete with as far as wages and everything else, so unfortunately, uh, he's been with us for eight years, uh, very hard-working officer, uh, hate to lose him, but um, if I was in his shoes and the benefits were in front of me like that, I, I think I might have, uh, done the same. So I'm asking the board to, uh, accept his resignation, his last, uh, date would be tomorrow, and allow me to start the process for, uh, trying to fill that vacancy as soon as possible.
So this just came up recently too, chief, with the new standards, we don't have a reserve pool like we used to, you probably have to go out, right?
Right, so, um, every officer now is, has to be certified, uh, through post as full-time, so there's no more reserves anymore. The only reserves that you probably see out there are officers who retired and they stay on just to help out with the department. There's no more reserve pool anymore.
So would you like to motion to be, Mr. Administrator, declare vacancy?
Yeah, effective what date, chief?
Uh, effective, uh, tomorrow would be the la- uh, his last day, so effective, uh, Wednesday.
Would you like to make the motion, effective March twelfth?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Landry, second, Mr. Johnson. Any further questions for the chief, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck, I know it's not easy.
Do you want me to stay on with the final communication?
Yeah, mine as well.
Um, last week, we, uh, we had an unfortunate event, uh, tragic event where a pedestrian got struck by a vehicle on West Main Street by Joshua Place. Um, unfortunately, the pedestrian, uh, it was a fatal, she ended up, uh, passing away Friday. Um, I have talked to residents of Joshua Place, there was a concern about crossing the road there in front of Joshua Place, I reached out to, uh, actually, John Marcy reached out to me today to, uh, maybe sit down with Mass DUT, try to figure out a better, um, sidewalk for the, uh, the residents there to cross the road, there is a sidewalk in front of McGee, which I have stressed with the fire chief on our last meeting with the residents there to use, but, um, maybe the state can do a better job improving that sidewalk so it gets utilized a little bit more. And with the warm weather, uh, motorcycles are out there, so if you're driving a motorcycle, watch, watch yourself, and then as you're driving a car, watch out for the motorcycles, thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Good luck with your search. Fire and EMA's.
Just gotta stand if it's alright.
I blame you, stretch your legs.
Uh, one thing I forgot to mention when I presented my budget, um, I mentioned a few months back, we got a Homeland Security grant for a new pickup truck, we should be taking, uh, delivery of that over the next few months. Uh, that being said, we're gonna give our old pickup to the highway department. Um, because they're gonna be able to fix the body up and stuff, things we can't do. Um, so the, the grant covers the truck a hundred percent, zero cost to the taxpayer. Um, and also, we had a fire last week on Marshall Terrace, I made the board aware of it when I was able to. Uh, everybody got out safely, unfortunately, the house was a total loss, when the first engine pulled up, there was fire blowing out of every window. Um, it wasn't malicious in nature, it was accidental. Um, and just everybody got home safe, and thanks to all the communities that helped us, it went to two alarms.
Chief, what was the age of the pickup truck you're surplus in?
Uh, that was delivered one month prior to me becoming chief, so May two thousand, uh, June of two thousand eleven, so.
I just wanna stress, and MJ's been there long enough, this goes back to three superintendents ago since I've been on the board, if I, you know, I'm, they do a lot at the highway, water game of trucks about a decade or so back that they couldn't use, and that's what we see folks when you're out there, they go plow, they go plow with a one-ton pickup or whatever. Yeah, the Amos body, yeah, I remember, the one that caught on fire, right? Was that the one that burned after? Yeah.
It comes with a plow hitch too, so you won't have to get one of those.
That's what I'm just saying, not only is he down man-pow, but they, they get a lot of hand-me-downs down there, so. We appreciate the departmental cooperation, thank you. George, you're gonna do it for sewer and water?
Uh, just the upcoming season, starting by the end of the month, we're gonna start hydrant flushing, sewer's gonna be out doing a lot of jetting. And I do believe that sewer project on Mill Street is gonna commence again, probably depending on whether the end of the month or in the beginning of April.
Any questions for water sewer? Seeing none, sorry, are you okay tonight? Anything you wanna add?
Really, really quick, um, I sent the financial statements, they've
Really, really quick. I sent the financial statements. They've been finalized from Scanlon and Associates, as well as the single audit and the management letter. I believe I sent that out to the board of selectmen. So we spoke as the finance team, reviewed the document, and we're in agreement with everything that was suggested. And if you have any comments or questions, you can reach out to me. And they'll be posted up on the website soon. I was having technical difficulties.
Any questions for the economy? Guys, all good? Treasurer collecting, anything else?
No, just to appreciate everybody's time to go through all of the receipts. When the request goes out for if there's an additional question, if you leave here and you scratch the side of your head and say, hey, wait a second, what was? Please, reach out. Happy to go to that next level of detail. I know I'm always, I'm always requesting if, if someone has a question, we're able to, to go back into the spreadsheet. If not, we can go back to a file from a year ago, two years ago, anything like that. As I mentioned before, hate to leave on a nasty note, but everything was due last week. So if you were driving a car in January, you should have paid your excise. Also, the water and sewer were due. Those are going to be demanded faster than you think. Also, the final real estate bill is going to be due on May 1st. There, anybody who needs information for what they had paid for taxes, there's a form at the, at the counter, happy to put that together. So instead of somebody writing on the back of the envelope, it is a report that gets produced that says Mr. Mayard, for his taxes, did this for that period.
Is that a VADA function?
It is a VEDA function, which is a little bit stronger than the point software function. Then you get into the legalities of mailing it because your excise bill's not public information because there's too many personal identifiers. So it's the reason we leave everything at the counter. It's, it's the better way to go. More times than not, hi, yes, it's a familiar face. Happy to go through and process it as opposed to mailing out, sending bills over an email, which just, it's the wrong direction to go.
Any questions for the treasurer? Anybody in the crowd? Good?
Thank you.
Mr. TA, I know we're going to hold off on yours because everything was kind of covered tonight.
The only thing I'm going to ask when we go and move into executive, if you could specify that I'll be under collective bargaining. I'll, the chief, the police chief, and I will be updating the selectmen on our first meeting regarding the police negotiation. So if you just want to specify, we'll be talking about the police department.
ATA, you good?
I'm sorry.
Board member comments? Mr. Sigunovich?
I think I'm good for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I think I'm good as well.
Mr. Landry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Springtime's coming. So is in St. Patrick's Day. Everybody enjoy it, but be careful.
Yeah, I'd like to echo everybody said tonight. We appreciate everybody coming in tonight. We did the three big budgets. That's why we do it in this order. Appreciate the library director with her presentation, the town accountant with an excellent presentation. Echo what Mr. Landry said. I've said it many times through the years, St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and we all know what that means. Two kinds of people in the world, the Irish and those that wish they were. Take a motion and move into executive session on that note.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sigunovich. Roll call, we're going to state the reason. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public party, chair so declares not to reconvene into open session. As Mr. Ruda stated, police, also Rampco, French Joint Venture LLC, Etal, Behan, and Patrick Etal. Roll call vote.
Mark Landry, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Stephen Solomon, aye. Will not reconvene in open session unless necessary. Have a good night, everybody.